I heard a river cruise started out with 100 people. They kicked 60 of them off.
What?
Wow.
Can I take one of these?
Yes, absolutely. How was your trip?
It was a great trip.
Good.
Since we tested negative today. That made it work.
We at least got to stay on the trip.
You know, I'd appreciate it, Sherri, if you'd give us more stuff because I don't know what to do with what I have already, but we need more. You guys want more? Want more stuff?
Yeah, sure why, of course.
I can become severe.
If something's good, more is better.
Who couldn't use a little more 20-year water supply facilities work plan?
Susan, I think, is attending virtually. Would you guys do me a favor and pass that down to Sherri?
Recording in progress.
Is it time yet? Looks like it's time. I would like to call the June 7th Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Lighthouse Point Board to order. Sherri, could you call roll, please?
Sure. Michael Cohen.
Here.
Fred McLean.
Here.
Dominic Ramona.
Here.
Kenton Hyattick.
Here.
Mark Mackey. Susan Muttley. Bill Gallo. Dennis Smith.
I'm here.
Hey, Susan Muttley just got on. She's promoting, I just promoted her. She just passed on mute.
Okay.
Good evening, good evening, everyone.
Hey, Susan. The minutes from May 3rd. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve this?
I move to approve the minutes from May 3rd.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye. Swearing in and silencing. If any of you would have cell phones with you, would you please silence them? You don't have to turn them off. Just silence them so we don't have them ringing. And Sean, can you swear in? If everybody who's going to testify, please stand up.
Raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Do you swear that?
Sean?
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move right into the agenda. Case number 22-06, JR Dunn, 4210 North Federal Highway, a site plan.
Good evening, board members. Daniel Mantel, City Planner. Address is 1800 Eller Drive, Fort Lauderdale, Suite 600. Just to give you a brief background, Douglas A. Mumal, on behalf of the owner, Anne Marie Dunn, has submitted for site plan approval for the addition and renovation of the existing site and building located at 4210 North Federal Highway. The proposed project includes a 5,800-square-foot addition to the existing building, facade renovation of the existing building, upgrades to the existing parking lot, newly proposed dumpster enclosure, parking lot lighting, and building site lighting, ADA-accessible ramps and walkways, enhanced landscaping, and a water fountain. The property is 67,634 square feet, which is 1.55 acres, and the total floor area of the existing buildings and proposed addition will be 12,254 square feet. The property is Zone B-3A, Special Business District, with an underlying future land use designation of commercial. As part of this process, the proposed site plan will be considered by the Planning and Zoning Board for consistency and compliance with the city zoning code provisions. The planning consultant requested the Planning and Zoning Board consider whether the proposed JR Dunn Site Plan addition meets the criteria set forth in the city's Chapter 42 Land Development Code. If Board considers approval of the site plan, the planning consultant would recommend the following conditions of approval, which would need to be addressed. Number one, the supplied impervious area, impervious area totals are not adding up to total site area. It appears that the impervious area and pervious area were not updated to include the newly proposed pervious parking spaces in the rear. We have a list of outstanding conditions of approval related to landscaping. Number one, please be advised that as a condition of approval, the proposed tree disposition plans must be reviewed and approved by Broward County for all tree preservation and tree permits. Number two, please be advised that as a condition of approval, please obtain a written letter of approval from the easement holders for any proposed landscaping within them. Number three, please be advised that as a condition of approval, please provide the proposed hedges with a spread and on-center spacing to be continuous, and the proposed ground covers and shrub beds with spreads and on-center spacing to be at least 75 percent coverage. Number four, please be advised that the condition of approval from the CAB to change specific non-native species, the southeast Florida natives, was made as determined appropriate by the project landscape architect. I'm here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Nico, do you have any questions? Willie, come on in.
I don't have any.
Fred?
I do not.
Bill?
I had a couple of questions on the site plan.
Please.
The architectural site plan and the civil site plan are a little different in terms of their side setbacks.
Okay. Did I do the site plan real quick and take a look at it real quick?
Yeah. So the, and I'm just wondering which one is correct. The civil site plan shows 3.7 feet on the south side. The architectural shows 3.
I apologize. Which sheet are you viewing?
So I'm looking at sheets C-1.00 and AS-001.
And that was the south side setback?
Yeah. So the architecture shows 3 feet. Civil shows 3.7. And the civil on the north side shows 2.0, and the architectural shows...
And you're referring to this setback landscape buffer, correct?
Yeah, well, the side yard setback to the curb, yeah. So I think three...
There's the building setback, which is the BSB indication, and then there's the landscape.
Yeah, SLB, the SLB, yeah. So the, I think we're required, is our planner here? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You are speaking with Dan.
I apologize. I came in late.
Dan, come up here and meet the, no, I'm just kidding.
I came in late.
I'm here too, Mr. Gallo. They have questions.
I think 3 feet is the required, correct?
Correct, that's the minimum required.
Yeah. So on the north side, we have 2 feet.
Yeah, there's 3 feet in that in addition, it shows the 2 feet as well.
So I didn't like trying to add up the dimension strings, but I'm just trying to figure which, if there's a bust, where is it?
Well, the site plan additionally shows the 2-foot landscape buffer, so it is consistent with the civil plans, but you are correct that the minimum required is 3 feet. But in order to have a proper, I guess, movement around the site, that 15 feet for a single drive is required?
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay. I just wanted, because according to the two plans, one's a little bigger than the other by 2.7 feet. Because they have the same north side setback, but a different south side setback, so something's different.
Yeah, I see a deviation of 3 to 3.7.
The only other question I had was, I think they're still okay on their parking cowl, but I think of the parking cowl, if you go to A...
There are an excess of 2 parking spaces as exists currently. We need to be mindful that they're proposing 6 permeable spaces in the rear.
Yeah.
Of those 6 spaces, 4 are required, 2 are in excess. And our goal there, we try to get to the minimum 25 percent landscape open space.
Yeah, close.
Right. We're getting there.
Darn close. But would you consider, when you go to AS-003, they calculate pretty much all of the existing building as office, and the new section is showroom. It looks like there's a big chunk of showroom that extends into the existing building. Is that, are you counting that space as showroom, or is that Kenny's office? Because it looks like it's showroom to me.
And you're referring to the area that's labeled Client Services?
Yeah. And then the next, and the area to the east that's called VIP and viewing room and...
I believe the main showroom, that would not be counted towards the total area that's represented as a showroom.
Well, you're on AS-003, Bill?
But I think, actually, I did a quick mental calculation. It looks like they just make it anyway, even if they just wouldn't have the excess. But I would just take a look at that. Other than that, I, any questions?
Michael, any questions?
I just have a general question. The thing that is going to end up having to be decided by us as the very first one in the report, special conditions or physical characteristics or special condition. Is there any guidance that you would like to share with us on whether you found?
And that relates to which comment, I apologize, which condition?
The very first one. They're slightly off in their pervious space.
Right. So I do not believe that they updated the pervious area to take into account those updated 6 pervious spaces in the rear, which is a difference of about 340 spaces. So when I added up the total, if they tacked on those additional 340 square feet, which is a reflection of the 6 spaces, the pervious area would come into conformance, or would be inaccurate.
I read it as if it just slightly missed, because it says it reduces the impervious area from 76.8 to 76.3.
Yes, sir, it's not much. We want to get that 25 as close as possible.
So it's close.
Well, in line with it, Dan, there, if you look at the calculation, the percentage is off by 1 percent somewhere.
And you're referring to this 76.3 percent?
You have 76.3 as impervious and 24.7 as pervious. That, in my simple math, adds up to 101.
I got you.
Not 100.
No, sir.
So there's a 1 percent, there's 1 percent off here.
Off.
Is that off of the impervious, or is that off of the pervious?
I believe it's the pervious.
You believe it's off of the pervious?
The pervious, correct.
So it's really 23.7?
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
That's okay. I just wanted to know if you, I understand it's a slight deviation, but are you aware of any special conditions or physical characteristics that bear upon that?
No, sir.
Kenton?
No, no questions.
Susan, you have any questions?
Yes, I actually have the same, along the same line of questions that Mike had. You know, I mean, this isn't supposed to be waived unless you have, you can demonstrate these various conditions. Nobody seems to be making any conclusion that they have. I'd like to know what they did and why can't they do a couple more spaces?
Yeah, that was my thought, Susan. Why can't they have some more pervious spaces?
Right.
What's the limit on them having more pervious spaces so we get it to 25 percent?
Right. So there is a provision in the code that specifically states that pervious, and it's indicated there in Section 42-142, that pervious paving blocks may not be used within a major driveway loading zone. Actively use parking stalls in commercial or industrial developments. In the past...
And if you look around that site, there's got to be 5 or 6 more spaces.
Exactly, Dennis. It looks like there's got to be a few more that would bring them into compliance.
And if granted approval by this board, I think we can move in that direction to propose additional parking spaces as pervious.
And then you'll be there, and then we don't have an issue.
I would think the 5 spaces that are in that center aisle in the rear of the parking would probably do it for them. And frankly, I mean, knowing that store, they never, unless it's Christmas, they're never using all their spaces anyway, so...
Or maybe Valentine's Day.
You're exactly right. And I mean, I've driven over there, and it's, there's amazing number of spaces that are never used in the back part of that property, and so there's got to be more spaces that could be pervious, and then eliminate this as an issue.
Right. And there's a lot of pavement on that site. I think we really need them to at least comply. It's not a lot, but I think they should comply with the requirement.
Yeah, I agree, Susan. Any other questions that you might have?
No, I don't. Thank you, Dennis.
I just, I want to go back to my comment before, though. So if we require a 3-foot setback, are they asking for a variance for a 2-foot setback? That's the reason I raised that.
What, a mess of parking?
I didn't think so.
Well, I don't really, it looks like they had to, they had to decrease that setback by a foot to accommodate the turning radius for the fire truck.
I don't see a request of a variance.
Right, yeah. If I can jump in, this is Jim Hickey. It was a, it was a fire access issue, because they needed to get in and out of the property, and they couldn't do that if it was a one-way in and out.
There's a drawing that illustrates that, and that's the only thing I could find, is a fire access drawing, turning radio drawing. And I'm assuming they had to go to that 2-foot just to accommodate the fire truck. Am I correct, or...
I believe you're correct. If the applicant's there, he might be able to answer that question as well.
That's a major difficulty. You can see it here, it's required a 3, and it shows 2.
No, I saw that when I looked through it. I have an open mind, because I wondered about your whole mind, but I agree with that.
We need to come up with some way to resolve that, because the drawing illustrates, clearly illustrates is the problem there, so we have to figure out a way around it, right?
So what do you suggest, Dan? Or Jim, what do you suggest?
I would fall to Jim Hickey.
Well, if it's a require, I mean, if it's a 3-foot requirement and they're not meeting it, then if, then we would require them to do a variance.
There isn't any way you can adjust that so that we don't need, that it'll meet the 3-foot?
That's why I was confused, because you have 3.7 on the civil plan.
Well, let's take a look at it. I'm sorry, my plans are, my plans are tiny, I have trouble seeing it, so. This is on the north side, right? The issue of the, it looks like they have 3.7 on the south side, and on the civil, it measures 2, but that's only for that corner.
It's only for that little spot where they had to increase the turning radius of the truck coming around.
No. Excuse me, Bill, on the, to the south side of that road, where they've increased that, where you have the 2-foot, there's 2 green areas with curving. Couldn't that be moved back a foot?
It all depends on how the truck, the truck has an inside and outside radius and a typically, like, an overhang for the bumper.
Yeah, because this is...
Fire people are pretty particular about their trucks.
Yeah. I understand.
I don't like to run things over.
On AS-001, where we've got the 2.0 SLB, it's only where that curb cuts in on the north end. And directly across from that is a loading zone and then 2 curved areas.
Is the architect here? Is that Doug?
Yes. I addressed it more.
Yeah, because I, couldn't you just slide, like Kenton said, couldn't you just, like, slide that down a little and give us the 3 feet? Because my problem now...
The 2 green areas on either side of the loading zone, because you're not losing pervious area if you're adding it to the other side.
I mean, our problem now is we, it would be tough for us to approve a drawing that blatantly says I'm in violation. You know what I mean?
I think...
Before you comment, could you state your name and give us your address, please?
Sure. My name's Doug Mumal, 4730 Northwest Boca Raton Boulevard, Suite 101, Boca Raton, 33431. Architect for the project. The outside turning radius is the one that the fire department is concerned about, so I see no issue with pulling the foundation planning in about a foot. The site does taper, so like, the green areas do kind of go from big to small, and that is actually what's happening on the south side. And then this is just, the north side is just following that line of the truck as it makes that turn. So that's more important to hold, let's pull it back closer to the building, and then we have our, the turning compliant, or the landscape buffer.
So you can bring it into compliance?
Correct.
We'll make that a condition, assuming we make an approval, we'll make that a condition.
Okay.
Anything else, Bill? Any follow-up by anybody? Dan, do you have anything else you want to present?
Yes, sir.
Given that, why don't you go ahead and make your presentation?
Sure. On behalf of the Dunn family, it's my honor to present this project. It's been a labor of love on a legacy business and community leader, and we've worked exhaustively to improve the non-conforming conditions throughout the site. And if you know the site, it's really just a sea of parking. So we are going to create a building that we believe that your community will be proud of, both during the day and at night. In the packet, there is a nighttime rendering. Conceptually, we wanted the building to be jewelry-esque, so we have a metal scrim. The metal scrim is backlit, or actually ball-grazed, and the materials are all like rose gold, limestone, but just beautifully elegant, just like the Dunn showroom. We've increased the buffer along federal highway. We're enabled now to put trees along there, which don't exist. They're spending additional money to make some of the asphalt into interlocking pavers. So we have added a decorative fountain. We've really improved, like, the walkability where the clients are going to go, and the arrival sequence is cleaner because of the 2 non-conforming cars. Architecturally speaking, like, we are, like, very excited to build this project. We believe that the legacy nature of their family and rebuilding this building and reinventing it for the next 50 years is what Sean Dunn and his mom want to do. So on behalf of them, I'm here to answer any questions and respectfully request your approval.
Let's start with you, Nico. Do you have any questions?
No, I mean, it's a good, good project, a good, good improvement for the city.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think it looks great. We just had that same issue, I think everyone picked up on, on making sure the pervious is there, because you're adding a square foot of John, it would be hard to not try to make it come in harmony, but other than that, it looks great.
No questions. I, you know, I think it's a wonderful design, be complimented. It's, I think it's going to be a great addition to the city and get over these little hurdles. We're good.
Mike?
I don't have any questions. I agree with what everybody else said.
Kenton?
Yeah, same as everybody else. I had a couple of...
Susan?
I just only like to say that I'm glad that the Dunn family is making an even bigger commitment to our wonderful city. They could be in a lot of other cities, and I'm extremely pleased that they are committing even more to our city. So thank you, Dunn family.
I just want to make sure that you have been in front of the Community Appearance Board, and there were 3 changes that they wanted to the landscape plan. Are you all good with all those changes?
And we made them, and they're incorporated into this set.
Okay.
One is just a permit condition, which we...
In addition, we have talked tonight about 2 things. One is to make more pervious spaces to get us up to the 25 percent. Are you good with working with Dan and finding the places to put those?
We are.
We also talked about solving that 3-foot issue, and Dan, are you comfortable that you two can work that out, assuming we make it a condition that'd be worked out?
Absolutely.
And then there were, like, 3 or 4 outstanding conditions of approval that, I understand, are there. Like, number 1, you still have to go to Broward County for tree preservation and tree permits?
Yes, sir.
You, that's good with you.
It's a permit condition, yes, sir.
There was also a written letter of approval from the easement holders.
Standard protocol, yes, sir.
And so you understand that, that's something you have to do?
Yes.
And thirdly, you understand that you have to provide hedges with a spread and on-center spacing to be continuous, and proposed ground covers and shrub beds with spreads and on-center spacing to be at 75 percent coverage. Is that good with you?
Yes, sir.
And then lastly, a conditional approval from CAB, oh, okay, that's the same issues on the landscaping.
On the ground cover, correct.
So you're good with all of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Anything else you would like to present to us? I'd like to open this up to the public. If anybody in the public would like to come up and ask either the city planner, or the architect, or the board, any questions, give us comments about this, please feel free to come forward now to do that. Don't all rush up at the same time. It looks like nobody is coming, so I'll close the public hearing. Nico, what do you think?
Well, I, I'm in favor, but I don't think I'm voting, because as far as the, I was told, are we, we're not voting yet, but anyways, but I like it. I mean, I think it's a good project, and, I mean, assuming we can get, it seems like the potential, you know, hurdles are not insurmountable, and for the architect, that we can get it done, so, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good deal.
Fred?
I agree.
Bill?
I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to second.
I think, I actually think that it's going to have more landscaping and more green area and be much more attractive now than it, or in the future than it is right now, so I'm...
Susan?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so, Bill, you've got all of the things.
So I would make a motion for approval contingent upon employing all of the recommendations of the Development Review Committee, the Community Appearance Board, resolving the setbacks to be equal to the 3 feet as required by code, and increasing the impervious pavers to bring us up to 25 percent.
Any second on that?
Any other conditions?
I'll second it.
I think he covered them all.
Okay, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Susan, any further discussion?
No, thank you, Dennis.
Let's vote. Sherri?
Michael Cohen?
Favor.
Fred McLean?
Favor.
Susan Muttley?
Yes.
Bill Gallo?
Yes.
Dennis Smith?
Yes. So somehow unanimously, you got approved. So, good job. Thank you very much for coming. Dan and Jim, good job. So...
Get done for a change of mind.
We will move on to the next one. If I can find one. Okay, a public hearing. Case number 22-07, City of Lighthouse Point, comprehensive plan text amendment of the sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water, and natural groundwater aquifer recharge element. Dan, are you going to tell us about this?
Jim Hickey is, if you can promote him to the speaker.
Lucky me, I get to present this very exciting text, comp plan text amendment. So this is part of the 20-year water supply facilities work plan. Each jurisdiction in the state of Florida is required to do this. Basically, what this is, is just verifying and updating information that is in the city's comprehensive plan to be consistent with the South Florida Water Management District's Lower East Coast Water Supply Plan. This was actually put back into the state statutes back in 2005, and it's really a way to make sure that the water that's available to be utilized is being utilized correctly and that there is sufficient water to allow for development in communities and counties and other areas. counties and other areas. So this is basically an update of, of one that we had done previously for you, actually it wasn't us, it was another company that did it for you back then. The water supply plan was approved back in 2018, the Lower East Coast Water Supply Plan. Basically, statutorily, we're supposed to have that adopted within 18 months. Of course, 18 months brought us to May of 2020, and the Department of Economic Opportunity at the state level allowed cities some flexibility, but now they're trying to get everybody to get these finalized. So in the backup, there's the report, and there are some minor changes to the text amendments, and those are in the back as an attachment. And it really is to make sure that we're consistent with the water supply plans of both Broward County and, uh, the city of Pompano Beach, because they both provide water to the city. Uh, so again, this is just an update, um, I can answer any questions that you may have on the water supply plan.
Okay. Nico, well, let's start at the same. Ken, any questions for Jim?
Yeah, the only questions I had were, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of strike-throughs, Jim?
Correct.
Um, if I understand what you, if I understand what you just said is, we're trying to make it comply or match with Pompano and Broward County, so that's why we're changing names and numbers and whatever with the strike-throughs, is that correct?
Right, well, what you're seeing in the strike-throughs is the actual water supply plan that was previously adopted by, by the, by the city. So what we're doing is going into the old document and strike-through, strike-throughing language that is incorrect, and updating it with new language, which is the underline.
Oh, right, okay, that's, and they have different names, and there's different numbers, percentages, and stuff, okay.
Yes, so all those, all those need to change, and basically, once, you know, if, if the water supplier changes the number of, you know, gallons per day that they, they actually produce, and that has to get changed in our documents as well, so there's a lot of that type of changing.
Okay, that was, that was my only, I just saw an awful lot of strike-throughs, and I wanted to make sure we, what they were for, okay.
Yeah, and I think the other thing in there too is that, um, the Water Management District is requiring us to, um, which, which the city has passed, the watering restrictions that used to be a county policy, uh, now the Water Management District is taking that over, and they want that part of the, um, the water supply plans as well, so there's, there's some language in there that adds that to it.
Michael?
Okay, um, just a curiosity question, it shows that our population diminishing in the future, I'm just wondering, do you have any insight into how they arrived at that conclusion?
No, we get the actual, um, projections from, um, the county, it's actually from the Beaver numbers, and then the county extrapolates that information. So it's really based on, I, you know, they, I used to do this in a past life, um, they basically try to identify where future development may occur, and which, where it may not. Um, in a, in a community about 10,000 that can fluctuate up and down, um, but there's a number of communities in Broward where the numbers are either at, at a level or, or slightly decreasing over time. But, you know, as you get further out, after, after five or 10 years, the numbers are really difficult to, to project.
Okay, then I, I just had two minor questions that are really, uh, one might be that the cross-through is too large, but if, and do you have the document in front of you on page 16?
Page 16?
Yeah, page 16, paragraph 3.3. You see the cross-out that starts with "in 1989"? Looks like the third sentence or fourth sentence.
On page 16, oh, 'cause, 'cause I'm on page 17, sorry.
Page 16, the top paragraph, 3.3? Yeah, we're-
Okay, 30-year water plan signed in 18, yes. So that was, that was struck through because they, their agreement is a, had been updated since 89?
No, it's just a, a language thing, it reads, "The agreement with Broward County is a 30-year agreement signed," and then it's-
Yeah, we should change that to make it, uh, an actual sentence.
Yeah, that's, I was just pointing that out.
Okay, good, thank you for the catch.
All right.
Sometimes it's hard to read these when it's the strike one underline.
And then the, the next one is just curiosity, what does LOS stand for?
That's Level of Service Standard. So each city's required to have a Level of Service Standard, which identifies how much, um, water is, is allowed per, um, per day or for, per year. It's usually, it's usually daily, based on million, million gallons per day.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Gallo?
Uh, you may have a couple of questions. On page 7-
Okay.
The, there, um, there's a section right at the top there, 1.1.7, says, "Prior to approving a building permit that would increase development within the city, the city shall consult with the city of Pompano and Broward, determine whether adequate water supplies will be available to serve the new development no later than the anticipated date." I mean, how, I, I guess these are sort of thinking down the road.
Right.
How do we, how is this process gonna be administered? And, that's one question there.
Right.
And then, at, at the bottom where you have the intergovernmental coordination element?
Mm-hmm.
Are we, does that imply that we're gonna be participating in costs associated? It says, "The city shall participate in continuing and ongoing collaborative effort with the city of Pompano and Broward County, and water services and other governmental agencies regarding water supply needs, long-term alternative water supply projects." That's the one that caught my attention. Does that mean if they gonna improve the water plant, we have to participate in the cost of that, or, I don't?
So let me, but, I, I can answer this one first. So really, this is a, uh, this is one of these policies that the Water Management District wants to put in, so that everybody plays nice. They play nice in the sandbox, that there's coordination and collaboration between whoever's receiving the water with those that are providing the water services. There's no monetary value or, or anything like that, they just want the ongoing communication between the water suppliers and, you know, the jurisdictions, with Pompano, with Broward County, to make sure that, you know, everybody's doing what they can to collaborate on, on water service.
So then I'm, I'm kinda struggling with that little clause there that says water supply projects.
Mm.
Because it sounds, it sounds like if somebody has a project, we're participating. Do we have to have that in there?
No, well, I think you're collaborating, you're not necessarily participating. It's more of a, it's one of those feel-good planning policies that we put in that we want everybody to work together. But I don't think there's a financial, um, number to that, but we could, we could wordsmith it if you think there's a better, um, item we could put in.
It doesn't appear to me like it's requiring, other than participating in, collaboratively in this. I don't really have a concern with it.
Guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, let's all be nice.
Right, and you know, the water, the Water Management District loves these policies that like, sound really good, but, at the end, what do they do?
But what can make, you know, if you're collaborating, you, you, there's different ways of colla-, I mean, I see Bill's, Bill's point.
Right.
Yeah, collaborating can be taken a couple of different ways. Collaborating means that it shall, participating means like I'm there with you, but-
Yeah, I'm with them, we're with them, but we're not paying anything.
Okay.
Can we explicitly say we're not collaborating monetarily?
I assume, because once they spend the money on the water system-
Yeah.
-to be able to provide the water to us, they're gonna be able to bill us under our water contract for that.
Right. And, and just a point of clarification, and not that we, not that we want to be like other communities, but other communities, we've put this policy in for the Water Management District. The Water Management District has looked at this, we always send it to them for review to make sure that they're, um, okay with the consistency of what we've written.
Okay.
But if you want to change, if we want to change the language, I'm more than happy to have a discussion about it.
Dennis, if I might just say one thing too, that we need to be thinking about, um, fortunately or unfortunately, our city does not have its own water system. We're dependent on Broward County and Pompano Beach, depending on where we live in the city. So, to me, it's important for us to participate in this collaboratively, so-
All right, yeah.
-at, at a base, just so we know what's going on and what they're proposing.
No, I agree, we don't want them to turn the water valve off.
Yeah.
But, so, going back to my first comment, so on the first-
Right.
Do we have to now put a step in our building permitting process to get approval from the county that says there's adequate water for a proposed development?
Yeah, well, as you probably know, this is done in a couple ways, right? So for example, let's take the, let's take the art club, right? When the art club came through, they had to do an amendment to add units, that went through a process, they had to get, um, reviews and approvals based on whether the capacity is there, correct?
Correct.
So if they're, someone new is coming in for a building permit, if they're replacing an existing structure, of course, that's not a problem. If they're coming in to do additional density, and they're gonna need additional water to that site, then they would need to get a permit from the, whoever's providing the water, to make sure that that can actually occur.
Okay, so you're saying it's no different than what we're doing now?
No, and again, this is another one of those policies that, you know, they like to put in, but really it is, you know, there, you can't put, you can't come in and say, "Now I want a four-inch pipe to my, my home," if you've got a two-inch pipe, without getting the approval of whoever's providing the water.
Right, okay.
So-
My only questions. Bill? Fred?
I guess I had the same general question as, as Bill, and if this is just, uh, plugged in, we're doing the same thing now, it was, you know, prior to approving a building permit that would increase development, you know, how do we define increased development? I mean, is it a new project, is it more square footage, is it more usage by, I mean, how do we determine that?
Size of the water surface.
2A, is it square footage?
Right, the size of the water.
Is-
Yeah, and also remember too, I'm sorry, the, the comp plan is, we have the comp plan, and the comp plan has to meet the water, the, the amount of water that we supply has to meet the, the city's comp plan, correct? And the comp plan itself has, you know, is basically the worst-case scenario, right? It maxes out all of the development potential. So it, that, there is a kind of caveat in there, that the, that there is additional water capacity if necessary to expand.
Okay. And then on, I guess it was page 16, just more curiosity, it said, "There's currently no master meter from either water provider to the city," I mean, I guess we all pay as individuals, but is that not something that we should have to corroborate, what we're all paying for water? Is there, is it really not a reasonable thing to put in?
I, I think it's reasonable, I don't know how we, how we go about that, you know, we'd have to work with the county and, and the city to determine, um, but it would probably, it would definitely be helpful to figure out what the actual capacity is, right? Because now we're kind of assuming that this is the amount that's coming in.
Yeah.
Based on water bills and things like that, that's how they, that's how they're calculating it now.
That was it.
I guess you have to, oh, sorry, I guess, I guess you'd have to like, instead of in your house, you turn off the water at the, at the street here, you have to turn off the water at, at the station there, to, to be able to put a new water meter in there, I guess.
I guess you have to. Be problematic.
I, I, I personally think it would be dangerous if somebody wanted to play havoc on the city, they can go blow up the main water valve, and we'll be all be in trouble.
Blow up the main line.
Yeah, uh, I just had one, do I, can I have one other question?
Go ahead.
Um, is there an intention to increase the distribution of reused water, or are we gonna leave it where it is?
Well, I think though, it really is the Water Management District, they're really trying to, um, push that issue, because the amount of water we have, of course, is a limited number, and the only way that we're gonna get future growth at some point is to start using reused reclaimed water. I know that, I think Pompano was one of the first to actually start that process.
I think they, they distributed-
So they're, they're working on that now. Fort Lauderdale is a little bit further behind. Um, Fort Lauderdale was putting all their eggs into the desalination, uh, process, but that was a couple years ago, I don't know if they're still going through that, but-
Because my understanding, right now, the south end of the city has access to Pompano's reused water, but-
Yeah, not, not much of that, Bill, 'cause I'm in that area, and on 28th Street, and they haven't come anywhere near to us yet. So, it's gonna be several more years, I think, before the entire Pompano water service area has that, very slowly progressing.
Yeah, we, uh, we were in that same area, and we have them.
Yeah, I think they got to, um, where the roundabout is, and that whole area down there, I, we have some friends who've gotten it, um, got the service, yeah.
Nico, do you have any comment or question on this?
No, I mean, I guess, uh, some of the stuff I had has been already discussed, so, uh-
Susan, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, the only, in, in, carrying on with the discussion about the reused water, apparently Pompano has had difficulty in getting the residents that already have that capability to sign on for it. So, that's an interesting point in this whole process too. Personally, I think it's gonna be great.
Yeah, I mean, the only comment I have is that we don't have a water system, actually, we just rely on other people, and so at the end of the day, if Pompano doesn't give us the 15% we get, we're screwed, and if Broward County doesn't give us the 85%, we're screwed in that part of the city.
Right.
Because we don't have pipes of, we don't have any, uh, water source of our own, we just have to plead with our neighbors to give us that water. So we're lucky that Pompano gives us water, and we're lucky that the county gives us water.
Okay, dearly.
Um, but having said that, I, I, obviously, we have to do this plan, but the plan is, please Pompano, give us water, please Broward County, give us water.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
Um, so what is it showing that we are supposed to do with this? Are we supposed to, um, assuming we want to, do a resolution that says that we advise that this plan is good, please have, please commissioners or commission have your public hearings? Is that what we should do?
Correct, it's an ordinance at the city commission level, but yes, it would be adopting this plan as written, and ask the city commission to approve it.
Well, don't they have to hold public hearings?
Two.
Two, so they need to go ahead-
And this is one step of it.
So they should go ahead and hold their public hearings?
Correct.
Right.
Somebody like to make a motion?
If I may, just, for the record, open up the public hearing and-
Oh, yeah, but, sorry, for all of you here in the, uh, I'll, I'll, to the public, if anybody would like to come forward and give a comment on, uh, this work plan, please come forward now. Seeing everybody looking down like they, uh, don't want to come forward, I'll close the public-
And I'll, yeah, I'm sorry, just a, just a point of clarification for you all, that when you're moving forward to vote, um, and it's on page two of the report, you want to, the planning and zoning board is acting as the local planning agency, so you're actually going to, well, if you move forward and provide a favorable recommendation to the city commission, that the water supply plan and the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan.
So, Sean, tell us exactly what our motion should be.
A motion to approve the water supply plan, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies, the comprehensive one.
Okay, would somebody make that motion?
Uh, well, can I make the motion, but I can't vote, or is that, uh?
No.
Oh, well, that's true, Fred, make the motion.
I can make the motion, case 22.
Well, just say what he said.
Seven.
Can we get the paper?
Yes.
Just say what he said.
What he said is my motion.
Good, can we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussions? Sherry, let's vote.
Michael Cohen?
Favor.
Fred McLean?
Favor.
Susan Motley?
In favor.
Bill Gallo?
What do you say?
Yes.
Dennis Smith?
Yes. Okay, so we have done exactly what Sean wanted us to do. So now we move on to the next item.
Yes, so the next item is the, the property rights element, and this is coming to you-
Wait, Jim, let me, let me officially call it, if I could, I just looked, looking for my agenda. Um, I will call case number 22-08, City of Lighthouse Point, comprehensive plan text to establish a property rights element. Sorry, Jim, go ahead.
No, my apologies, it's, it's so exciting, I wanted to get through it quickly, so, uh, love it. This is the property rights element- This is the property rights element. This is a requirement that was signed into law back in 2021. It was House Bill 59. And it really is to, requires each and every city to put those objectives and policies into their plan that basically lay out the property rights that each owner has when going through local decision-making at the city level. What you have in your backup is something that the Department of the Economic Security put together, so we just utilize the goals, objectives, and policies that are there. You can add more if you want to, but, you know, we feel that through the planning process that you all have, we have open public meetings, people can come in and, you know, talk about proposed projects, both the property owner and adjacent property owners, and that goes into the deliberation that you all have, as well as the city commission. So with that, we're asking you to review the proposed amendment, and as a local planning agency, recommend to the city commission that the proposed amendment to create the property rights element is in compliance with Florida statute.
Kenton?
That's it.
Kenton, you have any questions or comments?
Well, yeah, my only, I guess my only comment is, I was looking at the comparison, like, for hedge heights and for fence heights.
I think that's coming up on the agenda.
That's coming next, yes.
I'm sorry. I thought that was the property.
That's issue number eight. We're not there yet.
This is new. Okay, no, I have no question.
Michael, no, I'm, Bill?
I guess my question is that by, I'm just wondering what this is about, or why it's necessary? Are we not in compliance with the proposed House Bill, and that's why we need this?
Right. What the requirement was, is that anytime the city makes a, let me back up. The legislation was written that at the next time that the city makes an amendment to the comprehensive plan, they have to incorporate this element into their comprehensive plan. While we were going through this process back in 19, as you all know, the yacht club had a land use plan amendment, but that was started before the adoption of the, of this in 2019. So we got to go through that without doing it. So now we're doing the water supply plan, we have to have the property rights as part of it. And it's just something that the legislature passed, and it was really to kind of reinforce the state legislator's importance on property rights.
So? So had this been in place in 19, how would the processing of the yacht club been any different?
Honestly, no different.
So why do we need this?
Well, state law now requires we have it.
Right.
So state law is saying you have to have this in your plan?
Correct. It didn't used to say that, so we didn't have it. Now it says it, so now we have to have it.
And even though we can't have restrictions against Airbnbs and things like that, they want us to talk nice about our property rights.
Yeah. Fred, any comments or questions?
No.
Nico?
There's a.
Susan, anything?
Other than that comment, nothing.
Any comment you would like to add?
No, thanks.
Okay, I have none. So the motion we need to do, Sean, is exactly what?
Recommend approval to the city commission that the proposed amendment of the property rights element complies with Florida statutes.
Bill? Oh, yeah, we have to have public hearings. Sorry. Those from the public who would like to come forward and make a comment on this addition to our plan, please come forward now. Any comment or question? Nobody seems to want to do that. John, anything you want to just come up and say? Say hi. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so who would like to make the motion that Sean outlined? Bill, you need to.
I'll make a motion to, that we approve for incorporation into our comprehensive plan, the property rights element, goals, objectives, and policies as presented.
You are the man. Who's seconding that? I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? Sherri, shall we vote?
Michael Cohen.
Favor.
Fred McLean.
Favor.
Susan Motley.
Yes, other than, I'm sorry, I had my mute on. I thought we were recommending approval of this to the city commission, not actually approving it. Am I not correct?
Which one is right, Sean?
Recommending approval.
Okay, so do you take that as a favorable amendment?
I will adjust my motion to recommend approval.
And Michael, will you?
I'll attest my second.
Okay, let's retake the vote on an adjusted motion.
Michael Cohen.
Favor.
Fred McLean.
Favor.
Susan Motley.
In favor.
Bill Gallo.
Yes.
Dennis Smith.
Yes. Okay, so we've adopted that. Now, let's skip number seven, because I don't want to spend the time tonight on that. Eight, discussion of fencing along waterways for vacant properties. Dan, I assume there is a story with that?
Let Jim take that one away.
Jim, there's a story with that.
There is a story, and the information that you have in front of you might not be kind of what we need to have this discussion about, but I think the idea that was brought up was that there were some concerns about when vacant lots are demolished, just basically water lots, they're basically left open, and young children, animals, whomever, can walk through those areas and reach the waterside. So we wanted to have a discussion with you all, whether you think it would be something that you think we should consider regarding whether we require, if the property is vacant, to make sure that the side of the parcel that faces the water is fenced off to prohibit people from accessing the waterway. And the backup that you have, you know, unfortunately, we don't really have, none of the other cities that we looked at had something that was really for, you know, specifically for vacant, but we at least got you some information as to what other cities both fence, and I think we actually put the hedge heights in there, too. So there's a little bit of both in there for you this evening.
Okay. Anybody have any view on this?
I personally, I'm sorry, I mean, I personally with this, I don't see the need for it. I don't see, I think there's areas that we should be able to, there's areas all over the city that we can go to see, to be by the water, if there's a vacant lot and kids want to fish out of there or whatever, I mean, you know, it's somebody's personal property. If they want to fence it off, they can. I think we're getting into an area that doesn't need to be gotten into personally.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Hey, Jim, is there anything that prohibits a property owner from fencing a vacant lot?
No.
Okay, so if you wanted to, you could do it.
Yes. In fact, if I own a vacant lot, I think I would fence it off just for, you know, security and, you know, dumping of materials and just overall liability. I'd want people off of it, but that's my.
But the question is, you know, if you can do it, then it's up to you. Nico, you just.
So didn't we just approve this, like, your property rights? Shouldn't you be able to do what you want on your property?
Fred, what do you think?
Sure.
I guess I probably agree with Kenton, and it becomes an aesthetic issue. I mean, I can think of a couple right now where you can put up a big chain-linked fence on the back of your yard and leave it there for, I mean, a lot can be vacant for years, right? And it's pretty ugly. We can't tell not to put it up, under your point, but I certainly wouldn't mandate it because I think most of these people aren't going to put up a nice-looking, pretty fence that looks great from the intercoastal or the canal.
Mr. Gallo?
I think it's an area that we shouldn't get, stick our nose into because we can't control it very well. I happen to have this situation right next door to my house, right now. My neighbor sold the house, somebody bought it, tore it down. They started, they put up a fence, they started demo, they quit. Now they took the fence down, and it's an open lot. Frankly, kids in the neighborhood like to fish off the dock. It works out pretty well. But I'm more concerned about the fact that the city has numerous places, like every canal end on 39th Street, the big right-of-way there on 39th and Lighthouse Drive, which is a little basin there. Would we be, by approving this, are we now stepping on our own toe and saying that we should be putting up fences on all of our city canal ends? So I agree with Nico, let the property rights owner make their own decision.
Michael?
I can just say, when my son was young, a lot directly across from us on the intercoastal was blank for years. We loved it. We had a view of the intercoastal. My son played there all the time, and it would have been horrible to have a fence there that my son would have been climbing over anyway.
Susan?
Just ditto to all that's been said. I think it's unnecessary, and it's also extremely unattractive, depending on how many lots lined up, if this were passed, to have fencing. I'm against it.
Okay, well, it sounds like we need maybe a motion that just says, leave what's there alone?
It was a discussion point. I don't know if.
Yeah, we'll just do it by consensus, maybe.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
It's not an action item.
Our consensus is to just leave it alone.
There you go.
So would somebody like to make that motion?
I move that as a board, we recommend the policy of the city that we do not require fencing on vacant lots.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Sherri, let's vote. And in this time, include the alternates.
Michael Cohen.
In favor.
Kenton Heidick.
Yes.
Fred McLean.
Favor.
Susan Motley.
In favor.
Dominic Romano.
Yes.
Bill Gallo.
Yes.
Dennis Smith.
Yes. So we're all in favor of that consensus. Okay, public requests from the floor. Would anybody in the public like to come up and talk with your P&amp;Z board about anything that you would like to see us discuss or discuss it tonight? Please feel free, there's really only two of you, but you're more than welcome to come up and ask us anything you'd like. It would be, it would be fun. You were about to get up and come up.
I want to represent, I want to ask if you know I'm right in place to represent my case.
Tonight?
Yeah. I mean, just can I explain if I'm right in place? I have a problem with my condo or, you know, I don't know if I, you know.
Well, there's one exceptionally good person here tonight for you to talk with, and that's Sean, who is our board lawyer, and he can actually probably direct you wherever it is that you should go if it's not here. Sean, would you mind talking with this gentleman? Yeah, sure.
Because four years I don't have balcony, and they're giving me our time, I would have, you know, involved with the attorney all nine years, and now the board, they resign because there was so much.
Well, but the good news is, this doesn't cost you anything to talk to him. It costs the city.
And I'm cancer survivor, and I have a heart attack, but, you know, I'm getting too much anxiety. They're giving me our time, four years I don't have balcony.
Well, I can tell you, I don't think we're the right board to talk to, but Sean can direct you to where you should go.
Yeah, I can talk to you.
So now there's only one left. Are you, you want to come up and chat? I don't think so.
After the meeting is.
No, go right over to him. Although we do have one thing for you, and that's, does the zoning official, Dan, you or Jim, have any comments? Jim?
The only thing I was just going to bring up, I don't know whether I want to bring up that, but I'm doing a staff report for the city commission regarding synthetic turf. So there's a property owner that had some questions, so we're providing them back the requirements that we have right now, and moving forward and adding the engineer's report, you know, really is about pervious and how that drains. And of course, we all know from last weekend that we want things that drain, like existing sod, so coming up with other options that maybe aren't as high quality as we have right now would not be the way to go. But we will bring that back to you if that ends up turning into something that the commission wants us to look at.
That's good, Jim. Thank you.
Didn't function on artificial turf years ago.
What's that?
Didn't we function on artificial turf years ago?
Yeah, we did.
Can I ask Jim a question?
You all can ask any question you want.
Jim, what is the city's rules on zero-scaping? I know it was mentioned in the water materials, and I was under the impression that people could not do zero-scaping. Is that our policy or our laws?
Well, zero-scaping is really putting the different plants together, so if there's something that requires a lot of water, like sod, and something that's maybe more native, you have different watering times and days of the week where you do that. There is a, like a neighborhood, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of it, fleet, like a wildlife habitat, but I don't know that you all have any in the community, and that's really kind of putting natural plants in, to allow butterflies and other birds and other animals to kind of have more of a live area than just the sod and palms and trees and things like that, so.
Would somebody, I guess what I'm asking, would somebody have to get approval if they wanted to have a gravel front yard instead of a lawn front yard?
Yeah, we have sod requirements now. We require it to be green.
Okay, so that's what I thought you were asking. I was just curious, because that would save water, obviously, if you didn't have a lawn.
True. Well, that's what a lot of people say about the, about the.
Artificial.
Artificial turf.
Any other questions from?
I guess you can make the argument, if you put, like, native plants that don't require, that can just survive off the natural rainfall, I mean, you still have greenery, but if it's native, then you don't have to artificially water it.
Right.
From the, whatever, the period of time when you need to get established.
Sean, do you have anything you want to bring up?
I do not.
Seriously?
Yeah.
You don't want to stay here longer?
What's that? Oh, Sherri.
I have a question.
Oh, please.
Our meeting for next month is July 5th, it's on a Tuesday, obviously, July 4th for all vacation-type thing. I was wondering if we end up with something on the menu, on the agenda, will anybody be around?
I'll be around, I think.
Yeah, I think I'll be around. I'll be available via Zoom, but not in person.
Susan?
I'll be, I'll be available by Zoom.
How many people have to be in person?
Maybe.
I'm the same. I could be here. It is actually my anniversary, but we're going away the weekend before, so. We're not having dinner on the birthday.
You could invite her to the meeting.
She'd love that.
And we could wish her a happy anniversary, all of us collectively.
So we win, right?
Right. I mean, guess what? Why not? I mean, that would be fun.
It would be great. I have just a question, based upon Mike's comment, because he's talking about zero-scaping, and I remember, as I recall, when the artificial sod was brought up, we were also looking at swale consistency, as I recall. And there was some discussion about maybe incorporating what they call bio-swales, which is native material in these whales, and I don't know if this is something in light of this, I didn't look at that water, I mean, I look at more in terms of having us think more comprehensively about water resource management and water conservation. So is this something at some point we might want to just consider opening up for discussion once again?
We have the power to open up whatever we want in land use, so we have been clearly told. So anytime you want that on the agenda.
Not a good time to gift a little weekend. We had, talking about water conservation.
We could put it on the agenda anytime you want, though. You want it for July 5th?
I'll think about it.
We could do it for July 5th, right, Sherri?
Yeah, let us know.
Sure.
You know, I honestly, I haven't seen it very much in South Florida. You'd think with all the rain we catch, there'd be more communities that have it, but. with all the rain we catch, there'd be more communities that have it. But I've seen a lot of downtown areas that, that do it, you know, where they just put the bioswale in, and that keeps the stormwater from going into the drains and getting pushed out. So it's an interesting concept. Just, it's a different look for your streets.
Different look for the streets.
What's that called, Bill? I'm going to look it up.
We call them bioswales, right?
Bioswale?
Bioswale, which is capturing water in the--
And, and that's, by the way, everybody on the board, seriously, you, we can add, we, we are the planning group for the city. So we can add issues we want to examine and recommend, issues relating to the planning, to the city commission, anytime, any of us want. So feel free, if you want to add something to the agenda.
Before we close-- Well, I just think, because, because this water policy statement, or whatever we call it, it really didn't address water conservation. I mean, it was more about, more ethereal about it. And, and frankly, I think the more we encourage, when people redevelop their properties, to be better shepherds of how we use our water, and it might not be a bad thing for us to do.
We can do it. Just add it to the agenda.
I recall a long time, that's where I got the impression that we weren't allowed to have, which was confirmed, ground. There was somebody who had made a really nice looking front without sod, and they had to change it. And what brought it to my mind was the fact we're trying to save water. And I, I was like a stickler on the artificial turf, because I didn't, I looked at a lot of places, and some looked good, some didn't look good. They looked like a bad rug. But I'm nicely--
It looks artificial.
Yeah. There's certain areas where it looks good, but not a whole yard full.
No, you know, you could just take green paint, though, and paint those white grout.
Yeah.
Have green spray.
Yeah, or pink.
That amendment--
Kenton, you wanted it--
The one, the one thing I, similar to Bill, is that, in that, it was talking about enforcement of our water restrictions. If we go on water restrictions again by the city as opposed to by the county or whatever, that was in there. One of the biggest users that I see that frustrates me every day, all the way from Fort Lauderdale through Boca, is watering Federal Highway. I mean, the medians are constantly, none of the sprinklers are adjusted on the medians. That's something that needs to be addressed.
It's always right after I wash my car.
And exactly. You can't have a clean car and drive to work without driving through water on, I mean, water highways. Deerfield for 10 days straight. I call Deerfield 10 days straight in a row, before somebody went out and turned, they had a valve stuck, just before you went over the bridge in the Boca, right there by Marina One. And that water ran constantly, 24 hours a day, for 10 days straight. And it was flooding down Federal Highway, right there in front of Marina One. And I call Deerfield 10 days in a row. They're Public Works. They're trying to get them to go and adjust that valve. They finally turned it off, hasn't been on since. But there's a lot of places in the medians that really need, and a lot of it's reused in Pompano, I understand, but still, adjust the heads and water the grass. Don't water the streets flooded most of the time. I mean, that's just one thing. That's something we can handle.
Any conversation you want to have, Kenton, we can put on the agenda and talk about.
I think it'd be a good idea to have some input from the beautification committee, too, in terms of what I'm thinking of in terms of--
We can put it on the agenda and decide who we want to invite, and coordinate an invitation for whoever we want to invite. But we have to do it at a public meeting. So you got to put it on the agenda first, the topic. Then we can coordinate who all we want to ask to come to the next meeting to talk about it. And the beautification committee would certainly be one of those. But we can add whoever else we want.
Community appearance board also. They do, they recommend a lot of native, you were just talking about native plants. I've had a landscape company for 25 years. I can guarantee you, there's not a plant in the world that works without water, native or not. And, you know, native plants are more drought tolerant. They'll come back possibly after a drought. But if you want your lawn and your, your plants to look good, you have to have water. And it's that, it's that simple. Doesn't matter whether it's a native Florida plant or not.
But maybe you water it like once or twice versus three times a year.
Right. Let's just leave it with, if you want to talk about something, let's put it on the agenda, and then we will talk about it. And we will coordinate however we need to do it, in a public meeting. So the public is a part of it. And, and the invitation will be a public invitation to whomever we're trying to get to come.
I think we should, I was going to ask that we put it on the agenda. We're spending 10 minutes talking about--
Just put it on the agenda.
Oh, how do I do that?
Talk to Sherri.
Make the agenda.
You need to put it on the agenda? Anything else?
That's the only thing on the agenda for July 5, I would--
Yeah, we're not having a meeting. Anything else?
I have no applicants, so.
Nope. Then let's call the meeting adjourned.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Dennis, as always, a great guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.